Good morning, everyone. My name is Tim Traynor. I’m serving for this Congress as the Chair of the International Advisory Committee. This is one of the special sessions this morning. There’s only two events happening, so it’s this session and another session on the SDG Data Alliance. This session is really about the transformative work that’s been going on on national arrangements. And so, to put it a different way, for most of us, we all know what national spatial data infrastructures are, and we also know that we’ve been doing a lot of work over the last few years on the UN IGIF, the Integrated Geospatial Information Framework. That’s the next SDI. And the difference really is that the UN IGIF is a much more holistic approach. It includes many more components, things that are part of a day-to-day operation for that kind of an activity, but also from a planning and an evaluation perspective. So it helps a nation or a subunit organize themselves in a way that guarantees that their geospatial information management capabilities or responsibilities are more likely to be a success. And so that’s what this is about. So we have a panel this morning, and it’s a very diverse panel. We have folks that are walking through this process and are actually very far along in terms of developing country-level action plans as part of the UN IGIF. And then we have others that have embraced the UN IGIF and are aligning it to their current work. And then we have other aspects that are occurring within the UN GGIM family, if you will, family of work with different working groups. So we want to see how those activities are aligning to the UN IGIF. And then we’ve got a perspective coming in from solving particular problems in different regions of the world and how those observations might be helpful in the planning for future activities within the UN IGIF. So we’ve got a really robust set of folks. And the way we’re going to do this, and you are the main participants, so we’re going to hear some comments from the panel, but you are really the principals in this conversation. So I’ll go down and I’ll introduce each person individually and ask them to make a statement for a few minutes if they’d like, and I’m going to throw them one question or two and just, you know, have that frame their comments, and they could add other things to it as they see fit. And then we’re going to open it up to you, and I’ll moderate the information or the questions that you have, and I’ll direct them and help manage the work of the session. So that’s the way we’ll do it. All right, so I’m going to start off with, when we did the first work on the country-level action plans within UN IGIF, we had something called the Development Account Project. And in that project, we picked six countries: two island states, two landlocked states, and two least developed countries. And the goal there was just to test in how this notion of a country-level action plan would be put in place. We developed lots of tools, and we worked with those countries very closely. And we have some of those countries with us this morning. And those countries that are with us this morning have also gone to the next level, and they’re now part of the SDG Data Alliance effort. So it’s just an extension of the DA-11 project that we started in the first period. And now we’re in a, let’s just say, a second period, and they’ve made great progress. And I think it’s fair to say, there’s been so much learning going on on all levels, and I don’t mean just in our space, but I’m talking about learning within a country. The national leadership has been learning about the importance of geospatial. And it’s made a big difference for these countries as they advance their capabilities. It’s startling to me. I’m really so impressed by how this has been successful and how it’s coming together. And the model that we’ve been working within is proving to be a success. It’s proving to be effective. And so, so we’re going to hear a couple things, but I think I’m trying to give you information that you can use to help guide some questions that you might have. So our first country for today, our first panelist, is Mezian Hicks from Fiji. And Fiji was part of the DA-11 project, and they have been highly successful at engaging a variety of stakeholders within their country that are outside of their normal geospatial domain. And that engagement with those stakeholders has allowed them to gain the support, to gain the recognition, the understanding on the part of government. And it’s also forged some very important relationships between different ministries, different agencies within government. So these approaches, I think, have been very successful. So, Mezian, welcome. And maybe you could talk to us a little bit about the journey in terms of how lands in Ministry of Lands in Fiji has really expanded and is now serving the overall needs of the country and engaging with some of those other stakeholders that you’ve had the opportunity to work with. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Traynor. Good morning, everyone. It’s a pleasure to be here this morning and to share with you Fiji’s journey on developing our country action plan, leveraging the IGIF. Our journey began in 2019, and although we’ve had some bumps along the way, I’m pleased to say that we have finalized our document, but we’re still going through the process of presenting it to our cabinet for their endorsement so that we are able to implement our country action plan. One of the things that, as mentioned by Mr. Traynor, engaging with agencies and bringing them to the table to discuss the geospatial information arrangements in Fiji. Many of the agencies are not familiar with geospatial information, or many of the agencies just look to the Ministry of Lands as the National Mapping Agency to lead all geospatial activities in the country. But what we had to share with them was that we needed them onboard, and so we were able to bring them as part of a consultation that took place in June of this year. We needed their contributions to the development of our country action plan. But one of the things that we noted was the support that they showed for the country action plan once they realized the benefits that they could gain from supporting the country action plan, because they knew that whatever outcomes would impact their agencies in how they were carrying out their own activities for our national priorities. We have a five- and 20-year national development plan, and our country action plan aligns with that national development plan. And everyone that we brought to the table was part of that national development plan, and they saw the value of geospatial information, but they also noted the work that was needed to strengthen our geospatial information arrangements. And when they noted that, they threw their support behind our country action plan. And one of the things that they really admired was the linkages between the strategic pathways. And as Mr. Traynor had mentioned, how it was holistic in its approach in addressing the issues that the nation of Fiji was facing in terms of geospatial information and how it can meet our national development priorities. So this is basically from us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mezian. So you’re seeing that stakeholders are so critical, the engagement with people that within your own government that you have not had working arrangements with or have not had a real close working relationship with. These are things that are now starting to happen because the communication of what is possible with geospatial information within a country in supporting that other work is so critical. And there’s oftentimes a lack of understanding about that. So these stakeholder engagements and reaching out and having those conversations and meeting with people and then forming teams to actually work through some of the tasks that are part of the country-level action plan process are really important. So there are some words that you’re going to be hearing that we’ll repeat that are so critical to the success of what we’re doing. One is stakeholders. Stakeholder engagement is absolutely critical. Now onto other words. So the other thing that we talk about a lot in this program is the fact that we’re working, this is a country-owned and country-led process. This is how you build sustainability. This is how you build capacity. In a word or in a phrase, it’s because you do the work yourself. You don’t have other people coming in and doing the work for you. You’re doing it yourself. So these teams that are formed, they’re dividing the work up, their own staffs are coming together, and they’re making this happen. And so every step that they take, there’s a tremendous amount of learning going on. Now, in the case of the countries that are also realizing that this is having an impact on their national effects, they’re now getting the attention of higher-level government. You heard Mezian mention cabinet-level, cabinet-level endorsements. So Halalika Etika, we’re now going to go to Tonga. I’d like to go to some of these places. It sounds like a wonderful opportunity, right? I do have a shirt from Fiji, but I still haven’t worn the darn thing. But, you know, we can visit these places maybe someday. But Halalika Etika, she’s from Tonga, and she is the Deputy CEO for the Lands Group in Tonga. And one of the things that we’re realizing in Tonga is that, well, maybe I should just let Halalika tell the story. So tell us, talk to us a little bit about the journey, the process, and how you’ve been engaging with others in government, others in the ministry itself, but also beyond the ministry, and some of those challenges, maybe. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Good morning, everyone. My name is Halalika Etika. I’m from the Kingdom of Tonga. If you don’t know about Tonga, Tonga is known as a dot in the Pacific and is also known as a friendly island in the Pacific. So in regards to the question from the moderator, within the Ministry of Lands, we have been developed a country-level action plan. The country-level action plan, if we don’t have challenges, we don’t know where we start. So before we developed the country action plan, from using IGIF as a guideline for us to develop our country-level action plan in order to achieve or to address the 2030 agenda or even our national priorities. I think all of us here, we are facing with many challenges within our workplace, even in our environment. According to the 17 indicators, SDGs, we are facing those challenges. How can we address those challenges? So when we developed our country-level action plans, we distributed a questionnaire for all the stakeholders, for all the relevant stakeholders, to bring in their needs and the challenges that they’re facing with. And I think most of us here, we have common challenges, like deprecation of data. Within our workplace, like Ministry of Lands, we manually store our records in the office. Some records are lost, takes time to look up for the information, and also, we know about technology, but we can’t afford to buy those devices in order for us in the island and outer village to access to the modern technology of today. So when we are developing the country action plans, we catered and collected all the needs from all the stakeholders. Like I mentioned earlier, they’ve raised their needs and their wants on how can we address our national priorities. In Tonga, we are the second island in the world who is vulnerable to climate change and even natural hazards. So I think you’ve all heard about the big volcanic eruption that’s happened in January this year, and it’s affected most of the households and livelihood of the people in Tonga. And we could see that many catastrophes and also disasters that impact the livelihood of all the people all over the world. So in this IGIF and the country-level action plan, we bring together all actions, all needs from other stakeholders in order to work together, to enhance our collaboration and coordination in order to address the natural hazards and even the climate change impact. So for now, our country-level action plan has been approved by our minister, and so it is on its way to the cabinets to be passed by the cabinet. So I think I’ve talked enough, Tim. If you want some more things to be talked about.
Okay. Thank you. So you’ve heard earlier, we were talking about country-owned and country-led. You heard about the importance of stakeholders. You’ve now heard about the importance of aligning your geospatial action plan to national priorities and national circumstances. The days are done when we so focus on standard set of products or standard set of data just for the sake of doing that work. The question is, why are we doing that work? What’s most important? And how can we get the attention of the leadership to support the activities in geospatial for the nation? One way to do that is to align with national priorities and national circumstances. And if you do that, there’s a much better chance that when these processes make their way through ministries, departments, agencies, and make their way up to higher levels in government, either the cabinet or even at the senior executive level in a country, these things begin now to resonate. They begin to be relevant to the country. So now we’re going to go to Umar Kav from Senegal. Umar, you’re working on, you’re endorsing the UN IGIF, and you have been through different efforts, different experiences over time in trying to build that capacity and that capability within Senegal. Talk to us a little bit about how things are going in Senegal and what your plan is for engaging and embracing and then moving forward to ensure that you have geospatial activities that are going to support that management need in the future.
Thank you very much, Tim, for the opportunity of being here, representing Senegal, talking about our experience, but also, to a larger extent, the experience that we have in Africa, because I’m also chairing the UN GGIM Africa, to special management for Africa right now. So for Senegal, we started back in 2008 or '09, when the government of Senegal signed an agreement with the government of Canada to put in place geospatial data infrastructure. And from there, a legal framework was put in place by the government through a decree of the president, and it laid basically the foundation for the collaboration of the different institutions around the management of geospatial information. Because then an NSDI body was created, which designed the roles and responsibilities of different organizations, namely the National Mapping Agency and other organizations, how they should collaborate, and put together the different pieces of geospatial information that exists in the country, structure it and centralize it, and then share it for the benefits of all the institutions. And this has led to numerous advantages, among them the sensitization of different players and actors about the importance of geospatial information, strengthening the capacity of, you know, the human capital first, and then each organization was reinforced and strengthened to be able to adequately, you know, conduct its missions for the benefits of, you know, of its own organization, but also for the benefits of ours. And also, you know, an infrastructure was developed, because standards was developed and data was produced, the existing data was converted, new data was produced, and shared services were developed, because we were in a digital environment. And now, we are leveraging that to go to another level with IGIF. IGIF being now the new paradigm of geospatial information management at the global level, the new frontier to manage geospatial information. And it’s fortunate to have at the same time a land administration project going on in the country, and we’re using that as a vehicle to basically strengthen geospatial information in the country, which is to fly over the entire country, get high resolution imagery for cities and for rural areas, and also put in place an active, of course, an active geographic network, course stations. And more importantly, bring together all the stakeholders around that. For us, it’s a second round, because people have already, you know, are already sensitized around this issue. But the IGIF being a new approach, a new framework, and having already benefited from, you know, the concept of sharing geospatial information, putting it together, it just comes at the right time to strengthen those, this initiative of NSDI that was there. So it’s a wonderful experience going on right now. Difficulties, challenges, we face some of them as well, namely, people tend to cling to their data. They, you know, it’s some sort of, sometimes it looks like if they release the data, they share the data, they’re losing some sort of power. But we’re working hard to try to convince them that not only, it’s not useful to, you know, to keep data without sharing it, because it doesn’t benefit anyone at the end, but also, it’s important to have it there, to have all the actors, all the players get hold of the data, use it for their own services, for their own activities, and for innovation, and just for the benefits of all. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Umar. That’s, you’ve hit on a number of points here, and maybe one thing that I’ll say about the notion of the data, the experiences that every country has had in this process, without question, they’ve run up against some organization within their government that has locked that data up, in which people can’t get access to that data beyond those that are working in that domain. And one of the things, one of the outcomes of this engagement and these conversations that are happening is the recognition that locking that data up means that it’s not being used to its fullest potential. And so those conversations are helping to unlock that data, to get it out there, to be shared, to be exposed, to be used in different ways. And I think we’re seeing some real benefits in that regard. The other thing about this process with country-level action plans, it’s a very prescriptive process, there are steps, and we walk through them. And in the early phases, we basically ask countries, where are you in your geospatial capabilities? And then where do you want to be? So where are you and where do you want to be? The difference is basically a gap. It’s a series of gaps. It’s things that need to be addressed if you’re really going to get to that point of where you want to be. And that gap analysis occurs, and then you can go through a process of prioritizing those gaps, because some are going to be more important than others. And at the end of the day, one thing that’s absolutely clear about this process is that if you look at the nine strategic pathways, there’s a lot of work within each of those pathways. And it’s not possible, it’s just impossible, to be able to do all of them at the same time and see an end to it. So you’ve got to make decisions, hard decisions, about what’s most important, and that’s where we come back to the national priorities and national circumstances. If the seas are rising and you’re moving populations because of the impact of climate change, that’s a priority. That’s more important than some of the other more mundane things or more common things that you may be supporting in the work that you do. So you have to take action on those things. So we have Antonio from Indonesia with us, and he’s going to talk to us a little bit about the approach that his country has taken in the endorsement of the UN IGIF and how it’s making a difference to them. So please.
Thank you, Tim. Well, Indonesia has established NSDI in 2014. It took us more than a decade to do that. So there are so many conversations, so many ministry, agency objects, and also probably lack of communication for that time. Now, with the One Map Policy that has been developed by the two previous presidents, and we do realize that there is a need for more engagement from ministry and agency to be involved in the geospatial information project. But the project cannot stand alone as a single project. It has to be attached to many national priority projects. So it’s not easy. So getting funding from there is not easy. So while we are trying to modernize our NSDR, getting more ministries and agency and local government as well involved in the more advanced NSDR project, and while in the middle of that, IGIF came in. So I talked to Guy from the Ministry of Planning and Development, who are with us now here, to get a better strategy for us to include what we are doing now, modernizing our NSDR system into the next midterm development plan, 2024-2029. So in that case, because the first phase of NSDR wasn’t easy to set up, so we have to have a good So we have to have a good communication engagement strategy for that. That's why probably next year, next year, we are trying to get a kickoff meeting with many ministries that we are going to have a new arrangements for NSDI, which is based on the IGIF as a framework. It's complex. We've got so many disasters, seventeen thousand more islands. We only talk about the land part, not with the hydro or water part of the Indonesia. So it's gonna take challenges, many things to work on. We'll deal with a small amount of money. So we have to engage with many investors in something. And then that's why we have to be able to, like, have an innovation, how to fund the money or to fund our project in the next five years' time. And that's why I think the key message here is the strategy for communications is very important for us to get everybody to restart again our NSDI system in the future. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. And you mentioned some interesting points there. And one of the things you talked about was the focus on efforts in dealing with land issues and then also in dealing with water issues. And that takes us to our next panelist, John Nyberg from NOAA, who's been very active in a leadership role within the UN GGIM in looking at water issues. For the longest time in UN GGIM, we were focused principally on the land. And we were a little bit remiss in the early days, but we've made up for that, I think, in recent times. It's also clear that these things are happening all at the same time. So it's important to have an alignment between the efforts that we have going forward with the UN IGIF and then some of the other work that's happening within the Committee of Experts on Global Geospatial Information Management. And one of those themes deals with water issues. And so the hydrography groups have been aligning to the UN IGIF. And maybe, John, you could tell us a little bit about that process and how that's going and what do you think is most important and maybe some of the stumbling blocks? Thanks.
Sure. Thanks, Tim. I really appreciate being invited to be part of the panel. And I would start by saying, maybe the marine domain was a little remiss in not joining earlier in the process. But so I guess for about the past five years or so, we established the Working Group on Marine Geospatial Information about five years ago now. And our journey started with a discovery from a thematic approach where we put together a white paper and tried to find, just, I guess, verify where some of the gaps in our domain lie. And started with putting together a white paper to discover those issues. Along the way, I think we knew it to be true, but the marine domain is really working to be more integrated into the larger geospatial information ecosystem. And just listening to the panel some this morning, we mentioned data availability is an issue, and that's something that we're really working to address. And I think we, marine data is often difficult to access around the world, something that we acknowledge and are trying to work on. We'll address that largely through these institutional arrangements. And so a big part of working through that, we've started work on an operational framework that is a supplement to the IGIF and should help explain why a lot of this is important and how the marine domain should integrate into the big picture. The part one that explains that has been, it's published on the GGIM website now for you to reference. But I should say that when we started putting the framework together, it was my sort of belief, wrongly so, and probably that of the working group, that we would put together a document that a member state might take and just implement marine geospatial program. And that didn't, doesn't seem to be really the right path. And I've been really fortunate this year in particular to be working with the Pacific community quite a bit. And I mean, where in the world do people know more and have a respect for the ocean and the marine domain than in the Pacific community? And we recognized that we really needed to start with the larger IGIF and work down through that process. And it's really our job to make sure that the marine domain is included in that discussion. So I think that when we start working through how this will be integrated into the larger IGIF process, we do have to start with the pathways at the top and work through. And I think you heard some great examples of how the country action plans have been, are being implemented. And I was very fortunate to listen in on some of that work and learned, again, learned a tremendous amount about how this should be done. So I think just kind of to wrap that part up, we're still on a journey of discovery a little bit from the marine side. And I think it's evolving. We hope to have a much clearer picture this year and early into next, where we wrap, we're hoping to wrap up the part two of the operational framework. And one last thing that I really wanted to mention, and it's also working the other way. So we do a lot of work with the International Hydrographic Organization, who, so promoting standards is a big part of what we do also. And as a standards body, the IHO is in the process of implementing a series of new products and services for navigation in particular, but it expands far beyond that. And they've started to look at the pathways and how all of the pathways apply to these new product standards. So I think that it's important to acknowledge that it's working both ways, not only us trying to reach out to member states, but the IGIF is finding its way back into the stand, the role of standards too. So it's, I think, a really positive thing. And hopefully, it will help govern how, I guess, the life cycle of standard, a standard might run, at least in part. So I hope that is a good introduction, and thank you very much.
Thank you, John. And you mentioned a number of things, and I just, I don't want to lose some of the points you raised about what's available to each of us in the room. And that is that within the UN GGIM context, there are just tremendous number of documents and resources that are available on the website of UN GGIM. It's one of the better maintained websites that I've seen in my history in terms of those resources when things are happening. That website is updated and the information is there and available. So there's a lot of good information there that may be of interest to you in a particular area. You know, when you look at our panel, we have four countries on this side of the panel. Every one of them, and this wasn't by design, but every one of them is impacted by that marine activity. So, you know, there's relevance here. You know, we need to be paying attention to these topics. And we know, as time goes on, particularly with climate change, many things are happening, many things are changing. And we need to be able to plan and respond and react accordingly. So these are important topics for us. All right, now we go to Abbas. So Abbas is an expert for us, all the way from Australia, to talk to us a little bit about the work that he's doing in an educational context, in a planning context. Abbas is an expert in land administration and a whole series of other things, particularly with regard to SDIs. So he has a deep history in SDI development. And maybe Abbas, what you could talk to us a little bit about is how you see that transition between the traditional SDI approach and the more inclusive holistic approach of the UN IGIF. Maybe you could just say a few words about that for us to better understand that transition.
Thank you very much, Tim. And I would also like to thank the opportunity that we get today to share in the panel with other team colleagues. My journey, I worked with UN GGIM, started actually again back in 1993, even a few, I mean, about ten years before even we establishing the UN GGIM and then the formation of this. So I've been actually in the whole operation, or I mean, the transitions, I mean, to the whole activities. We are on a journey of learning and also as a continuum of evolution of series of elements related to the advancement of the technology and also at the same time, the challenges that we face as societies. So therefore, we're developing elements that actually at the time would actually be instrumental in our way of responding to those. So therefore, we started again back in before, in 90s, when we work on a spatial data infrastructure, started to providing some, as a framework, to assisting countries or promoting that type of elements. And then in early 2000s, actually, several countries started adopting, advancing, and providing that type of mechanism to better coordinating the activities. And then we continued as a journey to see other elements related to the, perhaps, I mean, series of internal pressures, at the same time, external pressures that is actually coming to our communities from, again, from the economics or from different elements as a sustainability, from societal as well as also environmental and also from the economical aspect. And several countries started developing the fundamental data sets, I mean, the coordinated manner as part of the SDI or becoming as a pathway that they can help or communicate in that. But our knowledge of understanding this had been actually again evolving and also very early stage of this, until we moved and then we learned more on this and coming to the UN GGIM and started working on IGIF, which again, I had the pleasure to be part of their work earlier, actually in particular in the formation of this and the nine components of this. And I see IGIF as a complementary framework rather than we arguing or saying that, okay, that SDI maybe was wrong or something. Now it is a continual learning and also from the cooperation to the coordination and now to the collaboration. And also particularly becoming very dynamic into that nature because our societies, our world is dynamic. We change and we're reacting, responding to the challenge we face. COVID is one of those already impacted economies of the old countries. And now countries going back, how they're going to actually continuing their investments on infrastructure. So therefore, the location information is a very crucial component to empowering governments and wider societies to addressing those kind of challenges and becoming more, or becoming more smart in that sense and also adapting themselves into that. So therefore, I also see, I'm very pleased to see the advancement of IGIF as a framework that is actually helping the dynamic nature of the move as well as also opportunity for more engagement of wider communities into that multidisciplinary domains that we do. Yes, SDI has actually been into the system, but even that we actually propose two level of activities from data-centric into the more process approach to advancing the activities. And now we're learning and now we have a much more understanding of this. And the importance of, and I'm really, very pleased to hear a number of keywords that our colleagues have shared on this from the leadership perspective that we need to have and also from the, perhaps, I mean, the impact and relevancy of our work. I mean, what is the relevance here? It's not just we creating SDI for the sake of SDI to have that. Or we need, but at the same time, we see the series of new parameters in the mix that we need to incorporate. I think it's exciting pathways, it's exciting and also seeing earlier adopter and countries that actually leveraging off the opportunity and using the IGIF as a framework to assisting their own, perhaps, I mean, the needs and also priorities, but at the same time, sharing those kind of new lessons that actually can assist the others. And we are part of a same community as a whole. And that's what I really liked also, the theme of the whole, I mean, Congress. We are really a part of a global village. So we need, and our, impact of our choices is not only impacting ourselves in our jurisdictions, it's actually impacting the others or empowering the others. So therefore, it is very important that we work together as a team and also understanding our decisions actually and also what the impact actually that's going to be on our societies. And also, again, sharing those elements. And hopefully, we have a better place for everyone and we're not letting actually anyone to leave behind on this. Hope that could help. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Abbas. And I think you've raised some very interesting points for us to be thinking about in that transition from the traditional SDIs now into a more holistic approach with the UN IGIF. And really, you know, the point of this is so that member states, countries can address the economic, social, and environmental, not only the challenges, but it also then provides opportunities. This expands the opportunities for these countries to engage and to grow and to respond to the needs of the populations that they have and the needs that are of issue for a particular country. The fact that you mentioned, Abbas, about the reality that what happens in a country is not necessarily contained within its borders. These things extend into regions and different kinds of areas. And that takes us to our last panelist, Bedendra from Oak Ridge National Labs. And one of the things that I wanted to engage in this panel on was while this effort at developing a framework and a different type of infrastructure continues and that gets established, the plans get put into place, the reality is that in the world, things are still happening. There are mass migrations of people because of different reasons. And we still have to respond to these things. And this is an area of interest and an area of work that Bedendra has been working in. So maybe you could tell us a little bit about the reality of that? And then maybe how this effort could then begin to address some of those challenges that you've been responding to and reacting to in the work that you've done in the lab. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. First of all, it's a pleasure sharing the stage with esteemed colleagues. I'm happy to, you know, share my perspectives on how for the last two decades or more, we have been supporting the US government and the broader global community in creating very high-resolution population distribution and dynamics data sets. It's one of the very few that has been continuously produced and updated annually and has been recently released to the global community as a complete archive. You know, maintaining population is, or creating the knowledge of where people are on this planet is probably the most foundational and fundamental knowledge that we need to have in order to improve quality of life, attend the Sustainable Development Goals, and most importantly, you know, respond to crisis. Because at the end of the day, you know, we are really, you know, interested in understanding and assessing the human impacts of whether it's climate change, which we essentially experience through extreme weather events, extreme floods, extreme tornadoes, you know, things like storm surges, hurricanes. And the interesting thing that we, from a science standpoint, that we are understanding right now is it is not just about the increased frequency and intensity and duration of these events, but also the occurrence of these events. events, but also the occurrence of these events in parts of the world, which have never actually experienced these kinds of disasters. So we are seeing wildfires in places that have never had a history of wildfire. We are seeing floods in places where there is no history of intense and acute flooding. And for, for, you know, the community understands that it is actually not the hazard, but the perception of the hazard that intensifies the human impact. So how well are we exposed and experience dealing with a particular event dictates how well we are able to cope with it, whether it's flooding, whether it's fires, you know, what to do when something is not going well is a foundational thing. So, you know, it's the first order, we want to understand where these vulnerable people are who are exposed to these crises. And the second thing is that what they might end up doing in response to this crisis, where would they go? So the Ukraine crisis is another example of where we are seeing mass migration of people. So I've been, you know, working in this area for 25 years now. And one of the foundational challenges that still remains is accessing and sharing of information on how people are moving, how many people are moving from where and where are they going? And that sharing of that information across the board from one country to the other. And, you know, Tim, you mentioned that, you know, a lot of these natural phenomena are across trans boundaries, international boundaries, but we have all been familiar that, you know, when the other kinds of crisis like Ukraine happens, it is the same situation that we are faced with, that we are, large number of people are moving across international boundaries to other countries. So collecting that information in a very authoritative way as much as possible and updating the data sets is, still remains a very high challenge. And this is where, you know, the global community is engaged in using science and technology, knowledge sharing, building capacities to, you know, to be able to understand, you know, how well are we able to gather these kind of information and how fast are we able to incorporate those in our data production system? So it is not just about creating a data set, but to update that data set as fast as we can. So I think we are in a very interesting place in, in terms of global scale data production and then updating and sharing it across the community.
Well, thank you, Bedendra. And I think as we then now shift this focus, one of the things that I just want to share with you is that what we've talked about so far, particularly with regard to the country efforts at developing the country action plans, just keep in mind that this is the plan. We haven't really crossed that threshold yet into implementing, actually putting the plan in place and beginning to put these pieces together. Several of our countries are now at that point, so they're going to begin the transition to implementation and that's going to create a whole new set of, of interesting results as we, as we watch that happen. But before they can do the transition, they've got to have the plan in place. So I just wanted to share that with you before we get into the question and answer point. So now we're to you. This is your opportunity to share with us questions that you have to our panel. And I'd ask you to do two things. One is that please ask a questions and then also be brief with your questions so that we can take the time then to respond to it. There are microphones put into aisles periodically across the room. And so if you have a question, please make your way to one of those microphones and then we'll start addressing those. So we have one over here, please.
Good morning, all. In this process of building the SDIs or implementing the action plans, it's unquestionable that the stakeholder engagement is required. Now, my question is about the grassroots execution. When it comes to multiple stakeholders, the knowledge and understanding of geospatial subjects is not same with everybody. How are we handling this challenge of educating what is what, what, which comes first, first, first things first? How are we handling the education part of building the data sets? Maybe my question is to Sri Bhupendranji and Budhendranji and the gentleman from Australia who are into the process already. What are the education based challenges which we will encounter and how should we tackle them while building the data sets? Policies will still be understood by the leadership, but building the data sets comes from the grassroots level. How should we handle this hurricane task? Thanks.
Thank you, thank you for your question. So I'm just going to repeat it, summarize it a little bit. Basically, it's the challenge of working with stakeholders at different levels within countries and, and the, the, the level of knowledge, understanding effort is diverse, it's not the same. So how do we respond to that? And I know we have been facing those very issues, so I'm going to kind of go down the line and just see whoever wants to comment on that, but I'll begin with Mezian, please.
Thank you very much. That is, that's a very interesting question and that's something we also asked ourselves when we were developing our country action plan. And so one of the key things that, well, the approach that we made was to involve our education ministry. And also we have an agency we call, it's called the E Taokai Affairs. They're the agency that is responsible for working with our grassroots people and we did our best to engage them and for them to be part of our consultation for the development of our country action plan. What we wanted to do was have that approach that to share what geospatial is all about right down to the grassroots level, for them to develop that appreciation for geospatial information and also to get involved. So when we, when we had our consultation, we also included them and we listened to what it is that they shared in terms of what they understood about geospatial information and how it can be filtered down to the, at the local level and also at the schools. And not only our Ministry of Education, we also included our tertiary, our academia in terms of how they can strengthen geospatial information at tertiary level. That's just some of the work that we are doing, we're still working on that, just to strengthen that area.
Thank you for that. And Halalika, do you want to respond to this point as well? I know that you have some experience in this as well.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you for the good question. That is one of our main challenges that we were facing with when we are developing or drafting the country exit plan. When we call a workshop to every stakeholders, most of them, because every, every organization they have their own data and most data, they are, I think you may all aware of it, it is inside, right? If a personal laptop, if you used to collect the data and put it in a laptop and so when it's, and that person can go with that data and that's it, yeah? So there's no, no server in place. That's the challenges that we are facing with. So they, they miss their data or lost their data. But the challenges that they raise, like how, how can we share the data with you? It's our data. In terms of educating, the Ministry of Education, they were engaged in this workshop, but they in geospatial, we have the location of all the schools, yeah? But the population of, of all the students in each school, the Ministry of Education, they don't want to share with us. But we are, in this exit plan, how we, we make, build a relationship with other stakeholders and it's actually, it's gradually come to understand the importance of working together and share the data so that can, what they can't see, they can see it when they look at the maps. So I think there's so many challenges, but when we come to understand through mapping of the location of any, of something happens somewhere, it's automatically come to make, give us an insight and interest to build a relationship and support the geospatial information management in our country. We start off with challenges, but it's gradually come to have a common understanding of the importance of what is happening in allocation. So I think I may contribute to your question, to answer your question.
So does anyone else want to, yeah, go ahead, Omar, please.
Thank you, Tim. I think this, this question is very important, actually. It gets at the, at the heart of pathway, one of the pathways of IGIF, which is communication. How do we communicate effectively with stakeholders, decision makers and so and so to be, in order to get, you know, the message across, but also for decision makers and the government is to get the money, the financing to be able to fund these, these activities. We technicians of this community, we tend to speak just our own language and to ourself, being technical and talking about data, but I think we need to, you know, we need to be able to speak the language of people that we have in face of us, how this technology and how these tools and data can be useful to them. We all remember that for a long time, I think cartography, maps were relegated just in the government offices and in the academia. It's not very long ago that it started being mainstream when Google, you know, Google Earth put this whole thing and make it really accessible and easy and, and easy to consume. That's how, you know, the industry from all sectors got into this and then, you know, it became mainstream. So, you know, at the, at the national level, we have to, with, with stakeholders, we act, have to act this way. We have to, to do some things that we can demonstrate and tell them, this is how or what this can do for you. You know, without just doing it with the means that we have. And then once this gets, you know, people know, understand what, how useful it is for them, then they, they, they get on board. So that's, that's almost the process that we were trying to do in, in Senegal at the National Mapping Agency. It's hard to get funding, it's hard to convince people to, you know, to give you the resources and the means, but then, you know, we realized increasingly, step by step, that once you were able to do some things out of the little means that you have and demonstrate that, you know, the capabilities and, and a strategic corrector aspect of, of these spatial information, then they, they get on board.
Thanks for that. And I think that, you know, one, one quick aspect of this is that this is within that realm in the IGIF where we're talking about people. So as Umar said, communication is critical and effective communication is necessary, but, but there are other aspects as well. You have partnerships, you build these partnerships with different organizations, different levels of government, different data providers. And then the other side is that in order to be sure that people are understanding the nature of what you're doing and the nature of the data, the nature of some of the technology, that's the education and training component. That's absolutely critical as we go forward. All right, let's take another question. We have one there, please.
Good afternoon. I liked it that the whole discussion started with the country centric and then going down the line to the other regions, right up to the human. So the applications that ultimately we are looking for is the ultimate user, which is the citizen who has to be engaged in various programs, various activities and so on, and the place of geospatial in that. So the last application is with the human. And in between these, there are layers from country to regions, to states, to districts, to small communities and so on. I have experience of about 30 years in dealing with this and I have realized that the lower the level, the deeper the application, the more the impact to the persons. Now I'm coming to the question that wherever we are right now, building new plans for building SDIs or further applications and so on, we are often bogged down by data, which I'm listening and seeing that many countries have that problem, we also have that. So on the other hand, businesses across the world are not so much bogged down by the data. There are informal ways of collecting data, there are proxies and based on these data sets, they are able to come to their conclusions. Geospatial in nature and still they are able to come to the conclusions. I'm glad that Google was mentioned as a research platform, but it is also a platform for getting a lot of informant, informal data. My point is, right in the beginning, in the planning and during execution, can we think about incorporating the informal data, huge amount of it, which is available to, to be part of that data set and be used in the applications? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I'm just going to open it up to the panel. Does anyone want to, John, please?
Yeah, thank you very much for the question. And, you know, as it applies to the, the marine domain, we do a fair amount of, we look into crowdsourced bathymetry and we're looking at means, citizen science, for example. And I think that it is, becomes an excellent part of our data set as long as we have, we know how it was collected, where it came from and the methodology behind it. So it's important to, you know, think of, of them as a stakeholder and a data provider before you start using the data, so we, so we know what it can be used for. And sometimes in the marine space, we are able to apply it to a product that is for precision navigation, for example, and the data has to be very precise. In other cases, we use it to determine where we need to do more work, better surveys, or we can use it to update a model. So I think that it's, I agree that there's a lot of data out there and it's, it's really valuable and we should take, continue to take advantage of it. So thank you for the question.
Can I just, thank you. I just want to echo what John just said and yes, we have to look at to the crowdsourced and existing information. In fact, opportunity for IGIF to allowing that type of data that actually get into the system and be integrated with authoritative type of information that we have. We should allow because, and again, it's not about only if those information is coming from the crowd or not accurate enough. No, in the, already actually have shown that in several jurisdictions, they're much more, perhaps, I mean, accurate and ready to be used in different applications and in particular when we're facing disaster. And this is what people actually acting as sensors and people now that we are seeing the connected societies and the people actually having their mobility and also connections and mobile and others, I mean, they can immediately responding. So this is why we need to look at and allowing that type of integration of authoritative and perhaps a non-authorative, but it's actually very valuable assets that we have in our societies, that we should use that.
Omar, did you have a point? And I'll come, I'm going to come to you in a minute, Bedendra, because I think you have an important point, but go ahead, Omar, let's hear your thoughts. But go ahead Omar, let's hear your thoughts.
Oh.
Oh, sorry, did, yeah.
Okay, um, uh, yes, I, I think this one, this question is very important also because uh, uh, it addresses the authoritiveness of, of data. Um, you know, it's, it's important to have responsibility uh attached to basically, you know, the, the production of data because then uh, the use of data has some liability or see the, also the camps, the camps risked. So this character, uh, this aspect of, of authoritative data is important. But also, but at the same time, you know, um, we have so many uh issues, so many challenges and so many things are, are happening uh that make it, you know, uh, using, just trying to rely only on authoritative data, it's, it's very complicated. Especially when you have uh the, the producers of, of these data do not have always the means to get these data, you know, updated uh and, and be uh useful. So in that sense, yes, crowdsourcing is very important, especially, you know, in disaster uh, management situations. But I think we need at the same time to build processes uh just to integrate, you know, uh, the, the collection of this data and its management into the, you know, standard processes uh to make sure that it meets certain criteria uh of quality uh before just using it. Because uh, there are new concept emerging about ethical use of data and also the liability with regard to uh, to, to using a certain, certain types of data. So it's, it's, it's important, but you know, it has to have some guardrails and uh, and, and certain aspect of quality control into it. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a tough question because it depends on the use case, it depends on what the situation is. I've always believed that some data is better than no data, but you don't wanna take that approach if the data are not uh good or if they're actually bad data. Bedendra, please.
Tim, thank you. Um, I, I think this is a very, very interesting question and I would like to take the opportunity to add to what my colleagues already said. But go back to the first question that was also asked um, on education. So um, governments usually have um legal liabilities and in terms of the data that they can officially put out there, which private sector doesn't have. So, you know, one way to think about it is that we could envision a world where the government is not necessarily the only authority that is pushing solutions down to the grassroots level, as you said, that at the human level. But allowing the creation of the environment and the technology platforms where private sectors and even citizens can build their own services and meet their needs, right? So that they, uh, the government is outside of the liability. Um, and, you know, over the last few days, I've seen in- incredible amount of examples of how um, s- small local level applications are being built all across this country and in other countries, in developing nations, where citizens are essentially creating these services like, how do I find a cobbler in my neighborhood or how do I find some other services, right? At the end of the day, that's what you expect to raise the quality of life. So informal data sets does have its own value and its own authority and power, but it doesn't necessarily have to flow through governments and that's my opinion. The second part is, um, going back to this educational question. Um, I was in, in a, in a discussion with the convener of um, this meeting, Dr. Datta yesterday, and it was a fascinating conversation. I cannot agree more with his vision of um geo-enablement and geo-empowerment. For the long time, you know, we have always thought about education as in very science and technology centric, right? So we have used uh words like public participation GIS, PPGIS, but it has already, you know, quickly goes down to a technology, like you have to know GIS, you have to know, you know, how to operate data sets in GIS. I think we should really take a step back and think of education and as, in terms of are we building capacity for spatial thinking? So at the G Chappell yesterday, in, when I, every time I walked by there, there were these brilliant examples of how, at the grassroots level, people are trying to, you know, induce the capabilities and capacities of spatial thinking. Because if, if all of us are able to think spatially, the rest of it becomes much more easy, right? You don't have to necessarily understand and make sure that somebody has access or use this usefulness of a tool or a technology. They can just solve a lot of these problems by their own, if that makes sense.
All right, thank you. Let's go to another question at this time. All right, we have one over here, please.
Thank you very much. Good morning colleagues. I would like to ask you on your experience identifying the data necessary to address your national priorities. This is how this exercise has been conducted. Has it been a collaborative work between different organizations? Finally, how you could confront the national strategic drivers with the data needed to support them? Thank you.
Okay, so this is about how you went through the process of aligning the data to the national priorities and those kinds of related things. Antonio, do you wanna try this first and then we'll come down the line with the countries to respond to that? Please.
Okay, um, eh, in that case, that's why I'm bringing my friend here from Ministry of Development and Planning to come along. So it's how, because in the next five years, we're going to set like the, the midterm development plan. It's not easy to get a standalone project for GI, geospatial information has to be attached. But anyway, well, government realized that geodetic infrastructure is probably one of the thing that is very important, as the base for everybody, every GI development. And then secondly, base map, we set base map and then, um, but the thematic map is a responsibility of ministries. And we don't know anything about what they are doing. That's why we, we, with the, together with the Ministry of Development and Planning uh here, we are trying to set what will be in the need for the next five years. Because, well, base map is, is just space map, like, but the, the economy will be run with the thematic mapping. So um, I think uh, again, we still have to talk to them, really. Communication is probably the key of everything. The key to answer the other pathways, Tim, I think was the point that I was, I was going to ask uh to, to deliver this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Omar, do you wanna make a comment about this?
Just to make sure that I understand the question, which is how to align?
Yeah, it's the process of how are you assuring that the efforts that you're going through with your building of the capability, the capacity and that development process? Um, how is that, how are you doing that and aligning to those national priorities? What's that process look like? How is that going?
All right, okay. Um, yeah, for us, uh, you know, as a national mapping agency, obviously, uh, you know, everything uh you are doing in producing base data uh is to support uh, you know, the planning, uh exec, implement, implementation and uh, and monitoring and also, you know, the, of, of public policies. It's, it's at the basis. Uh, but two organizations, the mapping agency and statistical organization, you know, they are at the, you know, at the fundamental uh level to, to support all the, all the other organization. But maybe one example that I could give uh is the, the current uh major projects in land administration that, at, that, that we are, we are actually executing and uh, and which we're using as a lever or other driver to, to strengthen geodetic network. You know, put in place course station through the entire country and also flies imagery all over the country uh with different resolution for cities and, and for rural areas. Um, we pushed really hard to, to have that. It was not supposed to be part of this land administration project. Uh, because we knew that having imagery at the scale of the country um, at this resolution uh, uh, will be useful for all the sectors in terms of supporting public policy. The geodetic network, as my, the, the, you know, the colleagues from Indonesia also said, um, is basically um, the foundation of collecting uh data, standardizing and sharing. Locate, you know, all the, 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 the location or pinpointing the precise location of the data, which is uh, you know, at the heart of uh, of everything that government do, because it's, everything is in, in space. So um, we really had the national uh development plan, uh, the national spatial plan, uh, this land administration project and all other project, we thought it through and realized, you know, these are the um, the projects and uh, the aspects that we need to strengthen really most in order to be able to support uh these um, these objectives that uh different organizations are working on to, to try to uh, to conduct their activities and, and to benefit uh, all of the population.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Avareka, please.
Uh, thank you. Uh, in regard to this question, how, when we are, when we were uh developing this country level action plan, how could this uh, uh, action plan address the national priorities? When we are developing a, a level, uh, a country level action plan, we created all the strategic plan within, within the, the government like um, uh, the Tonga Strategic Development Corps uh, uh framework. The vision of this uh, 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 strategic plan is for all Tongans to have equality of life. And so from that vision of the strategic uh, uh development framework of a country. So we also uh bring in the plan for, on uh, from the climate change, how, how could we uh address the, the impact of climate change in different aspect of the society? So we bring that uh, 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 national action plan and other strategic plans. So because the main concept of this country level action plan is to strengthen of the, using of the geospatial information management. It's just a GIS technology. How can GIS technology can address our national priorities? If our, our, our um, national priorities and our vision is to have equality of life for all the citizens of Tonga, how can we ensure that the quality of life is maintained within the life of the people? So like my colleagues uh, uh, are mentioning, that water is an issue. I think water is an issue across many countries, also in Tonga. We no longer drink the water from the tap, from the well water because of the salinity of water is high. So we use technology to filter those data, yeah, and the water so that we can drink. So uh, uh, how can we, how can we utilize that geospatial information management to, to strengthen the integrating of the data? So that uh, uh, so that we can address the national priorities uh like the climate change impact? How can we prepare for the, for the next uh events? How can we address the events that have been, that have been occurred? How can we prepare? How can we predict what's the next event? So uh, uh, we have uh, we have uh watched in those videos that we, on the first day of this uh congress and we see how, how, uh, uh, how changes, how technology brings different things happen in different places in different time. So uh, 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 I think uh, collaboration, inter uh, coordination, building a partnership, relationship. Because the impact of climate change, of climate change, it's not happening to only one person. It happens to everyone. Whatever action we, I do, there's an impact on others. When I do something wrong, it can impact on others. Uh, uh, I think that's why we need to collaborate, to build this uh country action plan as a fundamental tool, as a, 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 a platform for all of us to integrate, to work together, to address the impact of climate change on all of us all over the world. I think, thank you.
Well, that's, that's a very uh strong statement and endorsement for the need and importance of the Country Level Action Plan. Mesian, I'm gonna uh leave it to you to make the final response to this question and then we'll close out our session for today.
Thank you, Tim. Um, with Fiji's experience um, in terms of data to be used for national development priorities, uh, our national development plan is being handled mostly by government agencies, the implementation. And there is an understanding that they need data in order for them to, to use for analysis and for planning. And uh, in Fiji, we have a council, Fiji Geospatial Information Management Council. And this is where we bring the stakeholders together and uh, to discuss the needs in terms of data, what types of data is required uh in order to meet uh, for certain activities that are highlighted in the national development plan. Uh, the beauty about the IGIF and it works well with our council is uh, building those partnerships, building partnerships, uh continuous engagement, uh, communication, uh, back and forth, uh, bottom, uh, from the bottom up approach and top down approach. Uh, and that's something that we always value, uh, because we know the data is there. Uh, we know that there is a need to continuously collect data to maintain uh the quality of the data, the timeliness of the data. But in order for us to be able to maintain that, uh, we always look into strengthening engagement with other, other stakeholders because we know that they are custodians of their data sets. And uh, we look to ensure that uh our communications, our engagement and our partnerships with them is well maintained so that it's easier for them to be able to say, look, I have this data, I can share with you and I feel that it'll be useful for you to use uh in uh actioning or meeting the national development priorities. Uh, so that's Fiji's experience in that.
Thank you very much for that. Well, this time, we, we've come to the end of our session and I want to thank our panel for their insight and for their willingness to share some really difficult questions and difficult issues that they face every day. But as we said when we began this process, this is a journey. We're learning as we go, there's a great deal of, of advancement happening, there's a great deal of effort being put to this, um, to, to the development of the country level action plans within the UN IGIF. And I think that uh great progress is being made and I, I have great hope for, for, for the outcomes as we work toward this. So please join me in thanking our panel for today, please.